Hello and good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 28th, 2023 regular board meeting of the Methacton Board of School Directors to order, and let's rise or let's have Dr. Zerbi announce the pledge. Thank you.
Please join me for a pledge to be led by one of our own Arrowhead student.
Hi, I am Porter Thompson, and I am in fourth grade. He at Arrowhead, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag, our ninth state of America, and to your love with which it stands, on reason, our dear God, and his principles, my clarity, and justice for all.
And now, please join with me in viewing another Arrowhead student as they explain why Arrowhead is so important to them.
Hi, my name is Anika, and I'm in fourth grade at Arrowhead. I'm here to tell you why I love my school. The first reason is the teachers who are kind, helpful, and care about our education. The second reason is the specials that lets me explore my interests such as music, sports, and art. The third reason is because our new school has a huge library, an awesome playground, and a new gym. The fourth reason is the fundraising with you year-round that lets us support charities such as Penny's for Pets and Cantris and the American Cancer Society. The last reason why I love Arrowhead is because everybody gets to be themselves. Thank you for this opportunity to share. I hope you have a great day.
Let's give a round of applause for both of our Arrowhead students. They'll both receive certificates as junior board representatives. Thank you, Dr. Roberts, for having those students join us here this evening.
And thank you to Porter and Anika for that wonderful introduction to our meeting tonight. As far as announcements go, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. And there was an executive session of the board held prior to this meeting on February 28th, 2023 in the high school to discuss two confidential special education agreements. In terms of attendance, we are missing a few board members who are excused due to conflicts, Ms. Cancro, Mr. McGinnis, and Ms. Rocco. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Arrowhead Principal Dr. Aaron Roberts. Dr. Roberts, to to share with you some of the great employees at Arrowhead Elementary School with the Award of Excellence.
Thank you. Thanks for the applause, and I'd like to thank the board of school directors for allowing us the opportunity to just to share some information about these wonderful people I'm going to talk about here momentarily. So the first person I'd like to recognize is Dr. Nina Morgan. She is a student-centered, warm, nurturing, and caring second-grade teacher at Arrowhead. Dr. Morgan holds high expectations for her students and herself. She is an awesome role model with kindness and expects the best effort from all of her students. She always uses praise and positive reinforcement to engage her students. She is a true asset to Arrowhead and the Methacton School District. And Dr. Morgan, I just want you to know from the bottom of my heart, we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you, Dr. Morgan. All right, up next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. Michael Yosefond. He is an excellent person, excellent at building positive student relationships. Seeing Mr. Yosefond implement our inclusive practices model this year has been extraordinary for our students and for our staff. Mr. Yosefond is positive, he's energetic. I've been so proud of seeing all the group work he has done this year to engage his students. Students thrive in Mr. Yosefond's classroom, and Mike, I just want to thank you for all that you do for the students' school and the Arrowhead community. Thank you, Mike. All right, up next, we have Mr. Mark Horn, our PE teacher at Arrowhead. I'd be remiss to not thank Mr. Horn for his creativity, patience, and leadership as we endured our new school-building project. Mr. Horn keeps students engaged in our PE lessons. They enjoy all the fun activities he plans. He is a strong student advocate who understands the importance of nurturing the whole child. We appreciate his reliability, creativity, adaptability, the list goes on and on. So I just want to say to you, Mark, thank you for all that you do to make Arrowhead special and just for the amazing job this year. Thanks, Mark. All right, up next, we have Mrs. Christina Lenzey. Tina demonstrates a very strong work ethic while caring for our new building. She takes pride in keeping our school clean. She works with, she's always working with a smile and a great laugh. She has a wonderful sense of humor. Lastly, she's always willing to assist our students, staff, and community whenever asked. And Tina, I just want to say words, cannot express the gratitude we have for you, and thank you for working so hard to keep our new school so beautiful and clean. So thank you, Tina. All right, up next, we have Ms. Roz, as we like to call her. There she is. Roz is always positive, happy. She's always willing to help a student and staff member in need. Definitely student-centered, kind, hard-working, caring. She previously served as our recess assistant, and she graduated to the role as office assistant, and she is exceeding expectations in her new role. She's happy about that, as you can see. Roz, we appreciate your positive, kind, and genuine nature, and I just want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart for all that you do to make Arrowhead so special. Thanks, Roz. All right, we have another special person to recognize here. I want to recognize Ms. Heather Cornman. Heather is new to Methacton. She's a PCA, and what's beautiful about Heather is she fits right into our building climate and culture with her student-first attitude. Ms. Cornman is caring, hard-working, and kind. She's a team player. She will help any student or staff member when asked or called upon. She is friendly, she is thoughtful. The list just goes on and on, and I just want to let her know that we very much appreciate all of her efforts on a daily basis to help our students, staff, and the community. So Heather, I'd just like to thank you for all that you do to make Arrowhead and Methacton such a special. Thanks. Thank you, Heather. All right, and lastly, I'd like to take this time to recognize Mrs. Teresa Manzi. She is a fundraising rock star. She really, really is. This year, the Arathon, it is true. Yeah, the Arathon fundraiser raised over $42,000, in part to Mrs. Manzi and all the Arrowhead communities, their strong efforts. Mrs. Manzi has a strong work ethic. Students and staff were treated to many fun events due to her unwavering efforts to attain our fundraising goals. This year, we had a glow party. The kids loved the lunchroom cartoons, are asking for it again. The VIP breakfast, and we are looking forward to the end-of-year laser show. We are so thankful to have Mrs. Manzi as one of our parents who works tirelessly to support our students, school district, and schools. So Mrs. Manzi, thank you so much for everything, and again, you are a rock star.
Dr. Roberts, thank you so much for sharing just a few of the outstanding individuals that make Arrowhead an awesome school community. Thank you to the awardees here this evening. Certainly, we couldn't do the great work that we do without your passion. So thank you so much. And next on the list, we also have some other folks to award. We have Mr. Smink, the athletic director, to award him awards for athletic excellence. Mr. Smink?
Thank you. On behalf of the athletic department, I want to call up Ms. Jill Walker. She's our tennis coach, and then she's going to introduce two of our outstanding student athletes who are back-to-back state champs in doubles and actually qualified three years ago to be in the state championship as well. So she's, we're going to call them up along with Ms. Jill Walker.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for giving this opportunity to recognize Hannah and Alice. This was an amazing accomplishment. It's been so much fun to be able to be the coach during this time, too, you know? Last year, I thought, this is so exciting, they won the states, and then to do it again this year, I was like, this is awesome, I could really get used to this. So it takes a lot of hard work. Hannah and Alice, can I get you the seat so I can see you? I'm going to really embarrass them now and stick them in front of you. There you go. But it takes a lot of hard work, obviously, to get to the level to win a state championship. But both Hannah and Alice have really put a lot of time into their tennis since they were young, and they've been very good friends since. So together, their chemistry as a doubles team was amazing, and they were so much fun to watch over the years together. I'll just give you a quick, brief background as far as how this works. So with tennis, they play individually, but then throughout the season, you get a chance to participate in different tournaments, singles, doubles, and so forth. These two were like, we've got to be together, you know, for doubles. They looked forward to it. It started a couple years ago, three years ago. They won our league, then they won the district tournament, and they just kept winning and winning, and I was like, wow, they're going to do this. But we lost a little bit in the finals, but then they came back, and then last year, won the leagues, came in first place again in the district, and then they did it. They won the state championship. So then we get into this year, and everybody's got, everybody's got their eyes on them, they won them, right? And their, their play a little different, they're feeling the pressure, and I'm like, you can do this. And sure enough, it was like, it wasn't easy, they earned it. But they made it all the way through. I know they felt the pressure, but they showed together as a team, they really could pull together and win it. I mean, they worked together as a team, they were smart, and they earned the state championship. And that was exciting, not only for our team, but for the school district and the community. So it's not something that happens all the time. We're super proud of you. Thanks for all your hard work. And a special thanks, we've got their parents here tonight, too. Hannah's parents are here. We even have a grandma in the house, all the way from Lebanon tonight, so there you go. Luckily, we have Hannah back next year, but Alice, unfortunately, is graduating this year. So we've had a magnificent run, we'll miss you, Alice. We look forward to seeing everything you're going to do, and we'll be cheering you on, Hannah. We're ready to do this again next year. So again, congrats, girls.
Next on the agenda is my pleasure to introduce and to welcome the Methacton Coordinating Council, the Special Education Alliance, and the Home and School presentation and members of Home and School of our seven schools, led by Ms. Stover, our MCC president. Please join us at the podium, and please share with us all the awesome things that you're doing to help support our children and our school community. Ms. Stover?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. We might need to go back in a few slides.
Start, we normally start from the beginning.
Thank you. Everybody here, we are the Methacton Coordinating Council, along with the Special Education Alliance and the Methacton Home and School Associations, to present to the Methacton School Board tonight. One thing that happened in the beginning of the school year, one thing that is going to happen in the second half of the school year, and one thing that makes each of our schools unique. I am Gina Stover, the president of the MCC, and I would like to introduce our board members tonight as they're here with us. Angela Pushman is our VP. Right here. We have Chrissy Rizell, our secretary, right here. We also have Angela Steele, our treasurer. Next slide, please. The Methacton Coordinating Council is the MCC. The primary purpose of the Methacton Coordinating Council is to promote the advocacy of our educational purposes and to support the educational institutions within our school district. The MCC is the umbrella organization for all seven of our Methacton Home and Schools Associations, along with our Special Education Alliance, our SEA. Our seven schools include our high school, our COLA, Skyview, Arrowhead, Eagleville, Woodland, and Warsetor. The mission of the MCC is to promote and support each educational institution within our district. The MCC is also a 501(c)(3), which is a nonprofit that collaborates with our Methacton administration on behalf of our association. Now let's turn it over to Angela Pushman, our Methacton MCC Vice President.
Thank you. All right, so how does it work? Each of our seven schools has its own home and school board, which is made up of parents. Home and school activities are coordinated by committees, which are stopped entirely by parent volunteers who plan and host fun, family-oriented activities, organize fundraisers, and support community projects. We work hard to strengthen relationships between families and teachers and administrators every day to enhance our children's educational experience. To learn more about your specific home and school association, all parents are welcome to attend our monthly meetings. Additionally, Home and School makes announcements about events and activities through Constella. Now I will turn it over to Reba Mann with the Methacton Special Education Alliance.
Good evening. My name's Reba Mann, and I'm a member of the Methacton Special Education Alliance, which is a committee of the MCC, currently co-chaired by Julie Stevens and Sandy Katz. If anyone would like to stand up, feel free. The Special Education Alliance, or SEA, has set the standard in the greater Philadelphia region for parent inclusion advocacy in public schools. Our committee is made up of parents and guardians in the Methacton School District with a mission to provide a network of support for parents and caregivers of students with developmental or physical disabilities. The SEA offers access to relevant information and education while providing opportunities to connect with other parents and caregivers. We advocate for the collaboration among families, school administrators, educators, and professionals to foster successful educational outcomes. The SEA is accessible and present throughout the district. We attend each individual building's monthly home and school meetings, as well as all of their back-to-school nights. This past October, we also provided additional parent access to the district's administration and staff through our district-wide virtual special education back-to-school night. We advocate for inclusion and collaboration across district departments and schools, and have been instrumental in Methacton's participation in programs like Unified Sports and Best Buddies. The SEA hosts presentations and workshops on important topics such as Pat Radell's Ten Myths About Special Education Law and Inclusion of Students with Disabilities, and Sarah Ward's presentation on executive function. A significant way the SEA enhances our network of support is by maintaining our membership in the PA Inclusion Collective, a collaborative effort across suburban Philadelphia to promote inclusive education through advocacy. By working collaboratively with the PA Inclusion Collective, we've provided Methacton families with access to nationally recognized speakers, professionals, and advocates such as Julie Costin, Shelley Moore, and Dan and Samuel Habib, who recently wrapped up a truly inspired month-long series of presentations. Looking forward, the Special Education Alliance is planning some presentations and fun family social events in the spring, and after an exciting first season of Methacton's participation in Unified Bocce Ball this winter, we're very excited to attend the Methacton Unified Track Teams events to continue to cheer on our Methacton athletes. The SEA welcomes any family to participate in our mission, benefit from our resources, and attend our social events. We've become a well-recognized parent advocacy group in the greater Philadelphia area, prompting families in multiple school districts to approach us to discuss our mission, vision, and values so that they can develop similar committees. We're eager to continue our mission to provide support, advocacy, and inclusive opportunities to the Methacton School District community. And now I'll turn it over to Heather Duan to present for our COLA.
Hello, my name is Heather Duan. I'm the president of our COLA Home and School, my vice president, Michelle Sparanza, and our treasurer, Lisa Bruno, and here with me tonight is Jessa Fescuzi, our secretary. Thanks to our principal, Mr. Boudreau, and a wonderful committee, we had our first winner social that was a huge success that the students all came to in the beginning of December. And then we are looking forward in June to the eighth-grade social that will be held again at Northern Star Farm. And we feel that our COLA is unique because students play a lot of organized sports at clubs and rec leagues, but this is the first chance they get to represent their school at a sports team level, so we thought that was unique. And I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Mann from Arrowhead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Mann. I am currently the president of Home and School at Arrowhead Elementary. My fellow board members, which three of them are here tonight, Vice President Teresa Manzi, Secretary Shannon Romali, who's not here tonight, Recording Secretary Sarah Agnew, and Treasurer Erin Cardwell. This past fall, the Arrowhead community came together and raised $43,000 for our Arathon fundraiser. All students enjoyed a glow dance party with a DJ for their tremendous success. We are looking forward to a spring full of fun activities such as Fun Day, Field Day, and Goodbye Events for our fourth graders. Last week, our third and fourth grade girls enjoyed a red carpet ball with their dad or special guy. The evening included a red carpet entrance, movie reel-themed photo booth, dinner, dancing, and a lot of fun had by all. Arrowhead is unique because we have a strong sense of community, which was evident as we moved into our new building this year. We have an amazing team of teachers and staff led by Dr. Roberts. We also have a parent community that goes above and beyond with planning and volunteering for events, which continues to add to the success of our home and school, and for that, we are very grateful. Now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Riley at Eagleville.
Hello, I'm Sarah Riley. I'm the Recording Secretary for Home and School there. Standing near is Beth Farrell, the president, and Jody Kohar, the vice president, Noel Mullen, the corresponding secretary, and Tara Ryan Schill is our treasurer. Some of the things that we would like to share is that in, in the fall, Bob Kelly from Fox 29 featured the students in his series, Kelly's Classroom, in recognition of their hard work and success during the Read-a-thon. We are looking forward to Family Bingo Night, which is returning in April. Eagleville is unique because as a Title I school, its home and school raises a large number of funds that goes directly back to Eagleville families in need. And I'm going to turn this over to Gabby Winters at Methacton High School. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabby Winters, and I'm co-president of the Methacton Home and School with Susan DiMedeo, who's here tonight. I also have our vice president, Katie Shireman, and our treasurer, Sophia Pham. Our two secretaries, Deanna Rager and Jessica Fox, couldn't make it. One thing we did in the fall is we hosted a super luncheon for our staff. In November, our families provide soup, salads, and breads to show appreciation for our staff. We are looking forward to recognizing our graduating seniors who are most improved since their freshman year, so we freshman year. So, we look at the students' transcripts to see who's really worked hard to improve their performance here at the high school. And the one thing that is definitely unique about the high school home and school is it's the first time that the home and school takes a backseat in planning activities for the students. Because of our amazing elementary schools, Skyview, Arcola, and our club sponsors here at the high school, our students are ready to host these events themselves. We play more of a support role, and we get to see how bright the future is here by seeing what our students do. So, thank you for this opportunity to tell you about Mathacton Home and School. And I'm going to turn this over to Lauren Piers from Skyview.
Hi there. Thank you, Gabby. My name is Lauren Piers. I am co-president of Skyview Home and School. My co-pres is Nicole Rittenhouse. And as you can see, she doesn't provide a picture. She likes to be behind the scenes because she's not here this evening as well. I would like to thank Larina Johnson, our VP. She is here this evening, as well as Carolyn Maniscalco is our secretary, and Gina Stover is our treasurer. Skyview started off strong, right? Day one, we had a big bang of a welcome sign, right? You have these, all these new little fifth graders coming into this big school. So, we were really excited to help them, kind of maybe welcome them in. We also are pretty proud of our Skyview Strong, which is our primary fundraiser. And we were able to raise $23,000 for the home and school activities, and that was spearheaded by Jen Zavertnik. If you don't know her, she is a pretty, let me tell you, fierce woman to what she can do and what she can do by herself. And she really spearheaded that for us. So, those funds are raised and helped raise some of the amazing things that you'll see for this continued building our, you know, community, that spirit through this year. We already had our Mad Science evening. We're going to be having our Bingo Night coming up, spearheaded by Gina, as well as we'll have a movie night in Elmwood Zoo to continue that community presence. And then, I guess what makes Skyview unique is, if you think about it, right, we've got these wonderful elementary schools, you know, kind of smaller, that smaller feel coming into now Skyview. Now, we're six, almost 700 kids, and it's really just helping to spearhead that community that was built at the elementary school level and continuing that and being able to provide that through the home and school and keeping that alive as they continue through their journey through our school. So, thank you to the, you know, board for letting us do this, and thank you for MCC for giving us the opportunity. Thanks again. Now, to turn it over to Gina Stover at Woodland Elementary School.
That was an introduction. We are missing a few people tonight. So, Michelle Ferante is our Woodland Home and School president, and she is a little sick and under the weather, so I will be presenting for her tonight. We have some board members here with us. We have Chrissy Rizelle at Woodland Elementary. She is one of our secretaries. We have Kelly Parker. We have Teresa. And then, we also have Agada, and they are also not pictured, they're pictured, but they are not here tonight with us. So, we appreciate them all. So, this fall, the students at Woodland, we did a Read-a-thon, and we read over 52,000 minutes and raised over $18,000, exceeding our goals in our annual Read-a-thon. As a reward, the students were able to duct tape Dr. Euchre to the wall by Angela Pushman, our VP from MCC here, who also happens to be one of our phenomenal volunteers at Woodland. It was a sight to see. So, if you didn't get to see that, we will send you the picture. Dr. Euchre, we love you. The students are looking forward to pillows, popcorn, and pajamas. We're doing an American Idol theme and a scavenger hunt. And it was actually started by Woodland's own teacher. Woodland is also unique because it's the home to a variety of animals. We have fish. We have a snake, Monty, with Mrs. Geis. And the students enjoy feeding the fish and seeing Monty around the building some days. So, now, we're going to turn it over to Rosie Cook at Warsetor. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. My name is Rosie Cook. I am the president at Warsetor Elementary School. None of my fellow board members could be here today and didn't want to give them, didn't want to give me a picture, but I'm going to introduce them anyway. My treasurer is Nikki Ferraro. Our recording secretary is Bethany Coghlan. Our corresponding secretary is Jessica Starace. And we are currently actually without a vice president. Our vice president, unfortunately, passed away in the beginning of the school year. Her name was Jen Wales. So, we have actually been down a board member all year. Out of respect, we chose not to replace Jen this year. But I do have a couple of previous board members and parents in the audience. Hi, Amy. So, Warsetor this year, this fall, our students did our annual Walk-a-thon, which really isn't a walk-a-thon. If you've ever been there, they run. So, really should be called a Run-a-thon. That number is actually wrong. Our students, K through four, ran 9,727 laps around our Blacktop area, and they raised over $15,000, which is double the amount that we have raised in the past, which was great for us. We have a number of events coming up, including our Bingo Night, our school-wide dance, and our science fair. The spring, we were the recipients of a grant through Representative Matt Bradford's office. So, we are actually this summer going to be able to replace our playground this spring and summer. So, the Warsetor community is looking forward to building new memories on that playground. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and the board for everything that you guys did to help us with that grant. Everyone's really excited. The fourth graders are a little bummed because they will miss it, but they can always come back and play on it later. One of the things that makes Warsetor unique is our partnership with our really amazing neighbors, the Meadowwood Adult Community. Aside from being our evacuation zone, which I just learned this year, apparently, we have actually reached out to them, and we are getting several residents who are coming into our school either as guest readers, as kid writing helpers, and this is a brand-new thing. And the kids love seeing these people come in because they're different. They're not parents, but they're not their grandparents either. And so, our students have kind of created a relationship with their next-door neighbors, which we did not intend, but it's a really great thing to see. So, I will turn it back over to Angela.
All right. Me again. So, we need you. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the Mathacton Home and School Association. Please join the Mathacton Home and School Association at your school today. We need our parent volunteers. We could not do this without you. Your participation is essential and appreciated for the continued success of all seven Mathacton Home and School Associations. Please join us and share your talents today. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, the board and Dr. Zerbi. Thank you.
I just want to take a second to recognize all of you volunteers, because I know how many hundreds of hours you spend on these events and for the kids, and I know the amazing impact you have for all of our students. So, thank you, home and school volunteers and SEI, for everything you do.
I think, Madam President, I think we owe them a standing ovation for their work.
We do.
And Liz, not to, to, you know, I don't know, jinx anybody, but since you are the school board president, were you Woodland Home and School president at one point?
Treasurer, president, Arcola president, MCC vice president.
Okay, so just watch out, everybody.
But I know how hard, I know how hard you work and how valuable it is, because that's what makes school fun, what you guys do, and what makes kids want to, you know, go and attend things. And it's such an enhancement. So, thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Keep doing what you're doing. Keep making the investments into your children, into all of our children. And thanks for being partners in making the Mathacton School District community the best it can be. Thank you so much. We are going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is another important announcement. We do have Ms. Piergalini, the executive director of the Education Foundation, and a number of the board members here for a significant check presentation. Ms. Piergalini?
I'm so short. I don't want to say another thing. Hi, everyone. Thank you. I have two quick announcements, so you don't have to hear from me twice tonight. Real quick, the grant cycle for the spring 2023 closes soon, so we encourage all the teachers and staff to review our website and submit ideas. And again, the Mathacton Education Dodgeball Tournament at the high school is on March 26. This charity event focuses on bringing the whole Mathacton community together, and registration closes tomorrow. So, please visit our site, mathactonfoundation.org to sign up. Now, here's the exciting news. We are proud to present a check to the Mathacton School District for $126,910. This donation includes support for the following programs: a 3D printer at the high school, Dr. Krallik applied for the added technology education in classroom A206, lavalier mics for the theater at high school programs, Ms. Denise Naylor applied for this grant to accommodate the lead roles and help with the programs like Footloose, which was very successful. Ms. Carrie Stankis requested big blue blocks for Eagleville Elementary to have imagination playground blocks available for all students to play creatively during recess. In addition, when not in recess, classrooms will have access to these blocks for community team-building events and use them as an academic subject like science, math, and social studies. Mr. David Bickle requested a modern band grant at Skyview. It will support the addition of electric bass into the curriculum, allowing them to build a rhythm section, which is the heartbeat of modern band. A music technology student/teacher collaboration monitor requested by Mr. Eddie McCaffrey to support all students in Arcola participating in music classes as a part of the expressive arts rotation. Students will use technologies such as desktop computers, keyboards, and audiovisual production to navigate project-based curriculum. A news TV studio award to Arrowhead. Ms. Darlene Balliger-Pirnac applied for this grant for students to have experience with journalism and producing a news program at Arrowhead. Students will sign up for roles in news broadcasts from anchor to reporter to behind-the-scenes work, such as lighting and editing. In addition to weekly news, the equipment will be available to all teachers as part of their projects. And then, in conjunction with the Montgomery County OIC, we helped sponsor the HBCU Spring Break College Tours. Additionally, we also are supporting the Planetarium Horizon Project with Mr. Chantry. And then, this grant also includes our annual donation to support the Mathacton Backpack Program. Our board of directors is very proud to support these programs, and we thank all the teachers and staff who have applied and hope to bring extra opportunities to the students at Mathacton. I'd like to bring up some of our recipients and board members, so we could take a picture, if that's okay. Mr. David Bickles here, Ms. Mary Fitzgerald, Ms. Denise Naylor, Ms. Liz Francisco, and Ms. Carrie Stankis. And these are some of the teachers and staff that applied to receive a grant this past fall. So, congratulations. And then, some of our board members are in attendance. Ms. Shannon Peffer, Mr. Rudy Ruth, Ms. Betsy Tecco, Mr. Gary Gallagher, Mr. Jim Beam, Ms. Christine Steer, and Ms. Amy Smith. So, we also, they're very helpful in both fundraising and deciding which grants can be approved. So, thank you all, and...
Bureau Veritas representative on our high school facilities assessment. Mr. Bricker?
Good evening. As you know, we went out to RFP to find someone to help us update our facilities assessment program. In going through all that information, we found that Bureau Veritas would be one of our best clients, or best choices with this. And right now, to present this is Kostaf. He works for Bureau Veritas and has been the lead on this project, and will give an overview as to what we did and why with regards to this approach.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Tim. So, quick introduction. My name is Kostaf Chabukswar. I represent Bureau Veritas. My firm was hired by the school district to perform a facility condition assessment. Essentially, it's to develop a long-term capital plan for the schools, so that the school board can understand what are the expenditures to keep the building standing in as is conditioned over the next 20 years. Next slide, please. So, next slide. So, a quick introduction of who BV is. We are a 200-year-old firm. Our history starts from doing assessments during the Spice Trade Era, from Europe to Asia onwards. We purely specialize in doing building assessments and audits, third-party audits, so as to provide our clients impartial audit data on what the right information should be, and educate our clients on what the right decision should be going forward. Next slide, please. The services that my firm offers goes throughout the lifecycle of a given property. So, right from acquisition, planning, building, to all the way to disposition of the facilities. So, we provide lifecycle replacement solutions to our clients. Next slide. So, let's go with the project understanding as how we understood the project. The goal over here was to understand what are the deficiencies and maintenance issues at the buildings, what are your short-term and long-term investment requires, as well as cost needs for your school buildings to keep it standing, what are your repair estimates, and then, ultimately, helping the school board understand where exactly they should be spending the money, so as to provide a band-aid solution, as well as a long-term solution for the key problems. Next slide. So, let's go with the approach. I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about the approach, so that everybody on the board, as well as the audience, are familiar with how BV employees captured the information. Next slide. So, the methodology over here was, we started with a kickoff meeting where we met with the members of the school board to understand what their needs are. We sent out pre-survey questionnaires to understand what are the key issues with the buildings. Followed by that, we had our individuals from our firm walk around all the schools, all the seven buildings over here, capture information regarding the building's different components, roof, mechanical systems, electrical systems, yada, 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 come up with what the different conditions are, understand what the costs associated with replacing them or repairing them, and then pushing the data into a capital planning tool, so as to generate reports which can be useful for the schools. One of the key reports that comes out of that is called the Facility Condition Index, which we'll be focusing on as part of today's presentations. Next slide. So, as part of the data collection, our guys collected information on iPads, so that we could have a standardized data collection for all the schools. We were able to capture a lot of information through means of photographs, as well as capturing make-model serial number of different mechanical systems and electrical systems for the schools. Next slide. While going through the buildings, we were looking at different conditions, and this is just an example slide of how we determine the conditions for a given component, like what is excellent versus what's good versus what's fair versus what's poor versus what is failed. So, essentially, every component in your building, like right now, we are sitting in an auditorium. When you look around, everything has a life. And once a component comes to the end of its useful life, the school has to budget an amount to replace those items. And hence, all those things rolled up together form a capital plan for a school. Next slide. We can actually skip this slide because it's a bunch of animations. Ultimately, it shows how we do the prioritization. Can skip this slide. Okay, let's go over the findings of our reports. Okay, let's go over the findings of our reports. Next slide. What you're looking on the screen is the list of facilities that we had inspected and what is the approximate replacement value? In a scenario where if you decide to rebuild the buildings in its current state, what would be the replacement value for each of your facility? So clearly, the high school is around $119 million in its current state, not as a modern building, but what it's going to cost you in the current state to rebuild the school. Next slide. What you're seeing on the screen right now are your 10-year needs for all your buildings. So if you look at it, your expenditure for all your buildings comes to around $150 million over the next 10 years. Your Mathacton High School itself comes to around $97 million over the next 10 years. And now, these include a number of different expenditure arising from mechanical systems coming to the end of its useful life, roofs coming to the end of its useful life, your envelopes having issues, as well as site parking, et cetera. So it's a very thorough and all-inclusive assessment. What you're looking on the screen is only for the first 10 years as it's a good way of seeing a screenshot of what are your needs and what are your upcoming expenditure for the school district. Next slide, please. Now, let's talk about Facility Condition Index. What you saw on the prior slide was a bunch of numbers that show you what are your expenditures coming up for your school, right? But the question is what's good versus what's bad? Ultimately, one has to make a decision of how great a condition my building is so that I can make a decision about how much more money I can invest in the building or I should start looking into redevelopment of the facility. So that's where the Facility Condition Index comes into play, which is essentially a ratio of your repair items divided by your total investment, oh, sorry, total replacement value of the school. So what would be your cost to rebuild the school? And if that ratio is anything above 60%, it kind of tells you that you're at a point of time where you should really start thinking about, should I go for a new building, right? If it's anything about 30%, it is at a point where you have exceeded a threshold of, I need to really start investing into a major gut rehab of the building. Anything between 5% to 10% is considered as fair. So consider analogy of a car, right? If there's a point of time when you decide, I'm not going to do any more oil changes. I'm just going to go and get a new car because this is expensive. It's the same concept over here. Once your ratio crosses 60%, the red flags start going up where you need to start thinking about rebuilding the school or complete rehab. So having said that, let's go to the next slide and look at the results that we have come up with. So of all your buildings, in your current state, Mathacton High School is around 14.2% in its current state. That is today, okay? So that means it's in fair condition, right? Within three years, the high school is coming up to 54.8%, which is alarmingly very high, coming close to 60% where you might start thinking about rebuilding the school. And within five years, it crosses that threshold. Similarly, the administrative building is coming to that point within the first five years. And by the end of 10 years, it will be hitting around 37.6%. And as you can see on the screen, today, we are purely going to focus on the Mathacton High School, talk more about it, and later on in the future presentations, we can go over other schools. Next slide, please. Let's talk about the high school today. Next slide. Keep going. Next slide. Okay. So what you're looking on the screen right now are the four zones for engineering analysis purposes that we divide the school into. Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, and Zone 4. The nature in which the zones have been created is directly in line with the age of that part of the building. Zone 1 is the oldest part of the building. And if I'm not wrong, we are right down Zone 1. That's where the auditorium itself is. Zone 2 is predominantly your main athletic zone. Your gymnasium is there. Zone 3 and Zone 4 are your academic parts of the building. And we are breaking this into four different zones so that you can really analyze and see which part of your buildings are in more need as compared to the other buildings. Next slide. So when you look at the different zones over here, you can clearly see that Zone 1, which we are standing in right now, has a needs or FCI score of 33.7. So which, in the current day, it's 33.7. Between three years, it's going to hit 63.5. And between 10 years, it's almost 65.4%. So the question comes is like, why is this zone that bad, right? Why is this zone asking for such a high investment as compared to other zones? So when we do a facility condition assessment, we look at a number of different items which are classified as deficiencies in a part of the building. So in this scenario, Zone 1 has HVAC system which has inherent issues with it. Now, the current building is run as a two-pipe system, so either it can heat or cool. It can't do both at the same time. So the question comes, why? It's the nature of the system of how it was designed. Earlier in the years, there was a time, April 15 used to come and used to switch over from heating to cooling. And October 15 used to be the classic day when you used to switch over from cooling to heating. But right now, as you can see, we are in February and it's almost springtime, right? Which is unheard of. So the climate change, weather change, these play a big effect on how the buildings should be heated and cooled. And the buildings are not following the trend of how the weather is outside, sorry, how the outside weather is influencing the inside temperature and which is causing a lot of hot spot and cold spot across the building. Further, we also figured out that the labs on the second floor of Zone 1 were not meeting the ADA requirements. So that needs to be redesigned. The locker rooms were not ADA compliant, so that needed to be redesigned. So whenever you look at a building and whenever you're looking at major expenditure, you have to make sure that the schools are ADA compliant in all six. So those are the big items, ticket items, where we are clearly seeing that currently the school is deficient on. Similar items are also seen in Zone 2. Is the pool in Zone 3? I keep forgetting. The swimming pool is in Zone 3? Zone 2, forgive me. So the swimming pool is in Zone 2. We have issues with the pool as well with water leaks from the foundation. So that is causing some issues over there. So again, a lot of intrinsic challenges to the school's HVAC systems as well as a lot of things associated with the nature of the building itself. Not nothing with how it is being maintained, but it's purely as the systems are coming to the end of its useful life and in the current standard, they are considered deficient. Next slide. What you're looking on the slide is purely a graph that shows you how your expenditure gets piled on, right? The blue-colored bar chart is the current needs. Gray-colored is the deferred one, which means that what happens if you don't expend the money in the current year, right? It gets added on. Now, we are using an inflation rate of around 4%, which is industry-wide accepted range of inflation. And as you can clearly see that in 2024, your expenditure is coming as high as like 40% of your FCI, like your FCI score goes to around 40. And it steadily increases over the time. So it kind of shows the urgency and requirement of expending money towards fixing the issues in the building right now. Next slide. I think I talked about this slide before, but these are the areas which we identified as your major focus areas where your expenditure is going to come up. Your HVAC is a big chunk of money, around 28 million. Your electrical system is around 15 million, which includes lighting and other aspects. Your roofing, all your roofs on this school building are coming to the end of its useful life. Some of them have already passed their useful life. And it's almost going to be a $13 million expenditure on that. Your fixing of the pool is going to be around 4.3 million. Your accessibility requirements are around 2.7 million. And your interior modifications so that your classrooms meet the state minimum sizing is going to be around $18 million. So these are some of the key projects for the high school that we have identified as a third-party consultant to highlight the needs of the facility. Next slide. So in conclusion, the high school has been built in different phases, similar to hundreds of other high schools in the country. Every high school has been built in different phases, right? Your main challenges are humidity control. HVAC system is outdated. Your classrooms in Zone 1 don't meet the state minimum requirement. The auditorium that we are standing in right now is barely for 300 students, whereas the student population is around 1,200 students. So your auditorium is small. Your audiovisual systems are in the need of upgrade. They have exceeded the useful life. Your pool is having issues with almost 15,000 gallons of water leaking every year, sorry, every day. And based on all these items, we believe that it's time to look into if there's a major rehab to be undertaken or a decision regarding the future of the school. So that's from our side. Thank you.
Thank you, Kostaf, for that summary presentation. I should remind the board that, as I mentioned last week when we had the pool presentation, that these reports will be made available to you and for your review as well as the administration's review. And we'll do that up and through likely April of this year with the hope that, once it's thoroughly reviewed and you, as board members, are okay with it, the administration can recommend it for adoption, that we would do so in April and then take upon ourselves to develop the master plan similar to the same sequence that we did back in 2016, where we received the reports, we then developed the master plan and the schedule for addressing matters. It likely will also include, you know, further discussion. As mentioned here this evening, we may be challenged with making determinations as to whether or not we're making renovations or possibly some new construction or a combination of the two. Those are things that we're going to need to probably consider sometime in the near future, or at least gathering information associated with that in order to make the best decisions for the long term of the Mathacton School District, not only here in the high school, but in all of the facilities, not only the seven school buildings, but the other auxiliary facilities that we have. So with that said, let's take an opportunity for members of the board to my left for any questions for Kostaf. Ms. Graff?
Yes, hi. This was a really good presentation. I thought it was well-laid out and fairly straightforward. I just had one, I had one question. And I don't know if you can explain this on the fly, so I apologize if...
I try.
If you go back to the slide that has the four zones on it with the circle in red. If you look at the 10-year timing, each zone, I would say like the worst-case zone is Zone 1 with a 65.4%.
FCI, yeah.
How does that translate if you go to, if you go back two more slides, to the 71.9% that is the overall high school FCI?
Great question. So the 71.5 for 10 years is cumulative for all the zones as well as the ancillary buildings. And so if you look at Zone 1, your approximate square feet is 93,000 square feet and the replacement value is around $380 a square feet in its current state, right? Not as a modern school, but if you decide to rebuild. So whatever, it comes to around $35 million as a replacement. So what we are saying is, within 10 years, it will be approximately 65% of 35 million. So if you add all those numbers, right? It comes to around 70%, what is 71.5?
So 71% of the value of the current value of the high school.
Current value of the high school.
Is that a 119?
Yeah, 119 million, yeah.
Okay. So, okay, I just have to do the math because those numbers, I would have thought that they would have been closer. I didn't understand how the high school valuation number is higher than any of the individual zones. Does that make sense to you?
So if you do the summation over here, 35 plus 43 plus 25 plus 15 plus the football restrooms and snack bar, it does come to 119. So that total comes to 119, so...
But if I add up the 65% of 35, right? Plus 33.6, right? If I add them up, how am I getting a bigger percentage of 119 million?
So it's 33.6 of 43 million.
That, okay.
33.6 of 43. You won't do the summation of 65 plus 33, 40, no. You're doing 65% of 35 million, 33.6 of 43 million, 46.2 of 25 million, and 42.3 of 15 million. And so, once you do that sum product, you will land at the same number as that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Graff. Anyone else to my right, Ms. Drummond?
I just, I know that you said that many components are coming to the end of life soon. And so is that what causes, for example, in Zone 3, a jump from current 0% to 39.4%? Is it just that things like warranties are expiring or things are being calculated to come to the end of the life? Because I just am curious about how it jumps so far so fast.
Zone 3 is relatively a newer building. I think it's a 2002-built, if I'm not wrong. So relatively in a better shape as compared to other parts of the school. There are certain parts of the Zone 3 which are already having four-pipe system, which means simultaneously heating and cooling is feasible. But again, in general, the cost that gets added up over there are things such as lighting systems, which are coming to the end of its useful life. The school did a retrofit of lighting where I think they got some grant and they replaced the light bulbs. But the fixture itself has a life, right? So we estimate the fixture will last one to six to eight years, maybe 10 years. But it will soon come to a point where your fixtures will come to the end of its useful life. There are things such as fire safety items, which I think Zone 3 doesn't have a sprinkler system. The school is like so many different zones that it's sometimes it's convolating, like understanding which zone is what. But there are things such as fire sprinkler system which is missing, which is standard in schools, right? HVAC system is coming to the end of its useful life, which in terms of not being compatible with the four-zone systems, lighting system coming to the end of its life. Those are the items, along with the roof. So the roof typically has a 20-year life. And 2002, we are in 2023 now. So we are at a point where, you know, we have passed that stage where you need to replace a roof, otherwise, once a leak start, it's like you are just doing a catch-up at that point, so...
Okay, so really, it's a function of everything that was built together is kind of coming to the end of its useful life together. And that's why in a certain period of time, everything's jumping up.
Typically, 20 to 25 years is a timeline where most of your engineering components will come to the end of its useful life. That's when you start looking into replacement, including your floor tiles, paint, ceiling tiles, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Anyone else to my right? Seeing no other questions, again, Ms. Kostaf, thank you so much for your work. We'll be back in touch. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll continue to review these documents and have discussions among the board with a timeline to adopt and accept these as the report here in April. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Madam President, that ends the presentations of guests and scheduled speakers this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zerby. Now on to reports. We have, do we have Ms. Washington for DEI report?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Hope you can hear me. All right, I am pleased to share with you the updates for the month of February. So this past month, and this is probably the highlight of the month, we invited very important voices into our implementation of social-emotional learning and trauma-informed care that's led by Dr. Ingstad and members of the administrative team. At both Arcola and Mathacton High School, administration hosted a Student Voice Day, where approximately 40 students at both schools spent a day with Tom Stecker and his associates, as well as staff members in their schools to learn about social-emotional learning and share their feedback on school climate. And so our students shared how much they value being in school, and they learned how they can be leaders in their buildings to support a positive school climate. Our students also shared feedback on how the staff members in their buildings can support them through a trauma-informed and social-emotional lens. support them through a trauma-informed and social emotional lens. And the lessons and discussions that occurred during Student Voice Day mirrored what Ed Garrity had presented in their school-wide assemblies that were held in January. In addition to this day, it provided opportunities for staff members to work with their small groups to listen to student feedback about their aspirations for their school. And there will be follow-up meetings in both schools to review the students' feedback and aspirations. And together, they will develop an action plan to support our students and staff to foster a positive school climate that focuses on student belonging and engagement. Also this month, the Curriculum Office asked me to present at our school district's most recent in-service day. The topic of my presentation was creating a supportive classroom climate, and more than 50 staff members attended the sessions that were offered. In the sessions, we talked about what a positive school climate looks like, integrated social emotional learning, and provided time for educators to share achievements and opportunities of growth with each other. So I'm thankful for the opportunity from our Office of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, and I look forward to continuing to support our staff that work directly with our students daily. It's also important to know that this work cannot and is not done alone. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit hosted their second Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Social Emotional Learning Community of Practice Workshop. The purpose of this new working group is to provide support and professional development opportunities for other practitioners across the county that lead the work of equity access and belonging in their school districts. And this group also provides opportunities for collaboration, sharing information about new resources, and gathering tools to bring back to our school districts and communities. I also want to add that I am grateful for our seven building liaisons, our school connection teams, building principals, and district leadership that continue to support this work, because this work is continuous and it requires thought partners and supporters. So I also want to thank Mr. Regina and Dr. Engstad for always making it a priority to meet weekly and help guide this work.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Reese.
I don't want to put Ms. Washington on the spot, but now you've been here a couple months, so I just I just have two quick things. I was thinking, is that me? Sorry, I apologize. Maybe I was too loud, too close. Is that better? OK. I was looking at all the fantastic home and school volunteers that we had here, and I I don't want to put more on their plates, and I know that you work very closely with the building principals, but I was just wondering, I could see that being a great marriage one day of talking to possibly those wonderful people at their council one time. I just thought to myself, just that whole thing. And you said the next thing I was going to say, you mentioned the MCIU, and I have lots to report about the MCIU tonight. But and there are all the wonderful things they're doing there to help people learn and grow. And I had the privilege of having some networking time with some of the other school board directors, and I was sitting down with the a director from Lower Marion. And I I find them to be in the forefront, you know, of of a lot of this fantastic work. And she was talking about the how DEI is ever-changing to help people just understand and grow. As a 50-year-old, I am learning every day. And they were bringing up the idea of the of belonging, that everyone is trying to add that word belonging in. And I just wanted to share that because you mentioned it, and I think that's what all this is about, and seeing all those phenomenal volunteers from all of our buildings and, you know, seeing our our tennis players and our our students that come play here. I just I loved that, that they were including that, because I still think we are working on helping our community understand. And I just don't know how we can incorporate that. And I don't want to certainly do your job because you're the you're the expert, but that idea of adding the word belonging, because that, I felt, is something I learned. So I want to thank you, since you thanked Mr. Regina and all and 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 Dr. Engstad and Dr. Zerby for helping our our school district learn and grow in this area. Thank you even for not even what, six months, not even?
I think so, yeah.
OK.
We're getting, yeah, a little bit about that.
Thank you, but it just was a big topic of us before our meeting, just sitting around and talking about how we're learning this in Montgomery County, you know, in general.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Purdue.
Alexis, thank you for the presentation and information shared. I did, in reference to the Student Voice Day, I believe you said 40 students participated?
At both Arkola and the high school.
So 40 each?
Yes.
Do you know how the students were selected?
Yeah, it was really at random. So the building principals worked with their school connection teams. They also worked with their counselors. They looked at the list of the students that they have and asked the teachers in their buildings, who are students of positive influence, who also have an ear of the building, and trying to make it as open as possible. So there were students representing every different group possible. We will try to host more. That way, we can do a reset and get maybe 40 other students and maybe some of the same students back as well.
That was going to be my next question, whether you plan to host another one. I think it's really great, and I'm looking forward to hearing maybe some of the action plan that gets put in place. I'm sure you received a lot of input. I know our students are very well, well-spoken and always willing to share information with us on their needs, but I'm looking forward to hear. And I'm I'm glad to hear there was a follow-up or there will be a follow-up in an action plan, so hopefully, we can hear more about about that. One of my other parts was in reference to the building liaisons, because I know that's something new that we put in. I haven't heard much about how that's going, and I was glad you mentioned that. And I just wanted to hear from your perspective, how that's supported the work that you're doing with the district.
Yeah, I actually, I appreciate that model, and Lower Marion has a similar one with the building liaisons. It helps to filter down what's occurring from the district level with administration, where we do have representation from cabinet level down to the building so that we all are following the same mission. So it's a work in progress. It's it's new for everyone. Right now, we're all centering on this focus of student and staff wellness and trying to mirror that. But it's it's working, and it is a model that a lot of the other districts seem to be following, and it's working pretty well.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. And we're good? OK, thank you very much. Next is the MCIU, Ms. Reese.
Because of the way the meetings fall, I've had two meetings since our last board meeting. I won't go into detail about every single thing, but we met on January 25th and we met on February 22nd. Both meetings, normal board business. Couple highlights, we did have our audit, and the auditors went through, no problems. There's a couple districts that are up for reelection of their person. It's not Methacton. I've already mentioned that the budget, this is the first time that there's been an increase in three years. On a fundraiser note, the MCIU Education Foundation does have a golf classic, so any golfers out there, Monday, May 15th. It's really is a wonderful program. I know I've already talked about their casino night, but it was actually a lot of fun. So if we have golfers. But the biggest thing I want to share, and it is really, it's sometimes, you know, when we think about healthcare, we're so lucky to have so many amazing hospitals in the area, right? Well, I have said this before, we are so lucky to have the Montgomery County IU in our area. And I have it from the report, but I just took it right from the newspaper. I just want to read a little bit of this. The MCIU has been awarded a $7.2 million four-year grant by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This is a highly competitive project-aware grant. It is amazing. The IU will receive $1.8 million for four years, and it's only been awarded to 20 entities across the whole United States. And the the idea is to develop a sustainable infrastructure for school-based mental health programs and services, suicide awareness training, et cetera. We are so lucky to have the REACH program, but there is more mental health needed for for lots of people. And one of these ideas, one parts of this grant is to create a database, because there is such limited, you know, literally, sometimes when people are looking for help, they're given a piece of paper with some names on it, and the waiting lists are long. So it's just really, really phenomenal, and a credit to the staff at the IU who helped write this grant. So we will be hearing more about accessibility to this in the future, but it's it's just a real positive thing for everybody in our community, because there's Methacton, but there's all the communities that we're next to and all the people that we, our children and our staff, where they are surrounded by different people of different needs all over. So it is a really huge deal, and I will share any more information as I get it.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any questions? OK. And next, we have North Monco Tech, which I was able to attend. And highlights from that was a budget presentation. There is a proposed 4.1% increase from each of the Sunday school districts, which is in line with the ACT ONE index. This is primarily driven from several staffing changes due to added programs. North Monco Tech hired a new Megatronics teacher after an extensive search. This is a very much in-demand program, so we are really glad that this teaching position has now been filled. There is a classic or, well, car show, if you have an awesome car, on April 22nd that is sponsored by the North Monco Educational Foundation. It's Saturday, April 22nd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and you can enter your car, enjoy food trucks, see awesome cars, and participate in raffles and 50/50 drawings. And then we also, we actually kicked off the meeting by recognizing our Student of the Month, our very own Erica Sincere, who is our school board representative here. And Erica wowed the board with her video on her culinary accomplishments and aspirations, and we were just so proud of her and to to watch how she's just learning everything she she can at Monco. So it was great to see Erica. It was really great to see you there. So that is all I have for North Monco Tech. Now it's time for the student, oh, yes.
Do you know if the Megatronics instructor, have they started yet, or when would they start?
They, I believe they started the day of the meeting. Yes, they have started.
No, thank you, just because I know that was a hard course to fill, and I know many of our Methacton students are in there and actually having a really wonderful time with that course, and so I'm happy to see that they were able to staff it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, student representative reports. We have Joey Shaw and Erica Sincere.
Good evening, everyone. To begin, the second marking period of the 2022-2023 school year officially concluded on January 27th. Additionally, Methacton hosted its semi-formal dance for freshmen and sophomores on February 3rd. Regarding sports at Methacton, the Unified Bachi Team competed in the Montgomery County Championships against Posgrove High School on the 21st. As usual, basketball performed well, with the boys' team concluding a successful season on the 24th against Westchester Henderson High School in district playbacks. The girls' basketball team also ended their triumphant season with a loss in their district playback game against Cone Nostoga on the 25th. On top of that, the Methacton Cheerleading Team participated in PAC Championships on February 4th, receiving second place. The UDHS Last Chance Meet occurred on the 14th for the boys' and girls' swimming teams as well. Lastly, the Varsity Wrestling Team held its Senior Night Celebration on February 8th. Congratulations to all these teams and players. Swing Sports are also on the rise, as Boys Varsity Track is hosting its first meeting of the spring season on the 22nd. In addition to that, the Boys Lacrosse Team hosted its first practice on the 8th. As for other events, Footloose the Musical was performed on February 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Along with that, MHS will host a student blood drive on March 2nd. Any students of age 16 or older will have the opportunity to donate blood during the school year. Thank you.
Good evening. To start off, the Day of Prom has been announced this year, and it will be held at Sherrington and Valley Forge on Friday, April 28th. Tickets will be sold from March 20th to the 24th. Ticket costs $90 a ticket and will be sold during all lunches. After March 24th, the prices of tickets goes up to $100, and they will only be sold during homeroom. Students in full-time tech can buy their tickets from the East Wing Athletic Office from 7:30 AM until 3:00 PM, the same date prices as before. Anyone who is interested in the Red Cross Club, please seek out Mrs. Thompson, Methacton School Nurse. On Tuesday, Minithon, on Tuesday, Minithon held their annual student assembly. Students were taught about Minithon and how to participate.
Thank you very much. Now we have communications. Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. Thirteen Methacton High School students have been named finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. The program recognizes students from across the entire nation who exhibit exceptional scholastic achievement. Arkola's Math Counts team recently competed in the Valley Forge Chapter Competition and won first place. Math Counts is a national middle school math competition. Two Arkola students also placed in the top four at the individual level, giving them the opportunity to compete at the state level next month. Some exciting news through the district's Office of Community Education. Planetarium Director, Mr. Adam Chantry, led 20 laser light shows over five days and welcomed 508 guests. The laser light shows featured an eclectic soundtrack of classic hits across musical genres. Our guests had a terrific time, and we can't wait for the laser light shows to return next year. Tickets are still available for March 15th, 7:00 PM Planetarium Show. The 5:30 show is sold out. Go to methacton.org/planetarium for additional information to buy your tickets. And finally, this month, we celebrated School Resource Officer Appreciation Day on February 15th and School Bus Driver Appreciation Day on February 22nd. Our school resource officers and school bus drivers, like all of our staff, serve as important members of our Methacton team. We appreciate their efforts each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And now our superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. Listed on the agenda are a number of advisements, plus I have one other announcement. So in an effort to, in an effort to continue with providing an exceptional Methacton School District experience and through the leadership of this board, the Methacton School District began preparing for a five-year renewal of our food service contract by enlisting the help of students, staff, and parents. This process included the gathering of student and staff feedback, site visits, food sampling sessions, and more. The engagement in this process was purposeful in our quest to move our current food service ranking from a C+ to an A+. As part of the review process, students and staff at Methacton visited other local districts and observed, tasted, and experienced other options. We received an overwhelmingly positive response from students and staff. One noteworthy comment is that all of these locations had, as an example, a coffee bar with products similar to that which can be found at Wawa or Dunkin' Donuts. I guess it's called Dunkin anymore. I still remember it as Dunkin' Donuts. Anyhow, more important, students recognize the value of having access to higher-quality foods. One key element added to the RFP application process that that Methacton has submitted will seek to have a vendor supplied a chef alongside with our cooks and line workers to provide an opportunity to increase quality and variety of food served across all buildings in the district. A committee of students, staff, and home and school representatives will meet in early April to assist us with the review of the RFP and to select the winning vendor to service our schools in Methacton for the next five years. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Any questions? OK. Now it is time for public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. Please state your name and municipality.
Jim Malik-Worcester. Payment of the Bills. How much money in the payment of the bills was for improving test scores here at the district? I know you like improving the food, Dave. That was one of the niche things. But how much money did you put towards improving the test scores that were down 30%? If you can give me that answer, you can email it to me. I'm going to talk about the Methacton Construction Company's $1.1 million Planetarium. That's 9GC21. That's on the agenda. The seating, all right? Now, the seating that you guys are purchasing for 54 grand, is that part of your discussion you had with Mr. Chantry when you told him to think big? Go big? Is that, is that it? Get the most expensive seats we can find? Is that the game plan? My calculations are, I heard there's 60 seats going in. $54,000 for the seats, that's a thousand a seat. Mr. Chantry went pretty big. Did you get any other bids? Any competitive bids for the 60 seats at a thousand bucks a pop? What are they, massage chairs? Heated? Air-conditioned? A thousand bucks a seat? See, when it's not your money, it's easy to waste. That's the problem. And nobody seems to watch it. It just, you know, guys just do what you want. My opinion is you need to not go big. You need to get more bids, okay? The crossing guard, $10,000 for a crossing guard. I sat at a finance committee meeting, or either that or the property committee meeting, where Mr. McGinnis wanted to extract money from the church who's actually helping you guys find parking for the students. He wants to make sure the church pays their fair share of the 10 grand. So I thought maybe I'd clue you in onto some etiquette. The church is helping you out. The church is doing you a favor, helping you find parking for your students. The church applied for a variance, actually I think it was last night, to help you take care of your students. That's not the way to treat somebody who is trying to help you take care of your students. You should be thanking them, not sending them a bill to pay their fair share. The church is saying they want donations. They're not charging anybody anything. And the donations are going to be for the wear and tear on their lot. Are you going to pay for the wear and tear on their lot? So I'm for the 10 grand for protection of the kids. I'm not for harassing the people at the church. Thanks.
Any other comments on board action items this evening?
Oh, I can stand. Cool. Well, no, I can't. Okay. No? Sorry, I'm short. Wait a minute. Hold on a second. I don't know. I'm short. I can't. I should have left it. Okay, can you guys hear? Sorry. I run into this all the time. Oh, can it, does it go out? Okay, it goes out. Sorry. Thank you for that. Okay. Learned something new tonight. Okay. All right. Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. Can you guys hear me? Okay. There is certainly much to celebrate tonight. It was great to see the speakers. However, there must be balance and transparencies. I have some questions and comments regarding the following board auction, auctions. The pool and the high school. The ADA law took effect in 1972. How is it a problem now? The American and Disabilities Act does not require districts to structurally alter bleachers built before 1992, so long as the district provides program access to wheelchair users. So what have we been doing all these years to provide access? Over the years, the care-
Excuse me. This is for public comment on board action items. I don't-
This is, this was in the board, this was, so you stopped in my time. This was in the agenda and this was in the material from last week. So this is with, the pool is with the presentation and within the budget, so it is within that. So it's in there.
It's not an action item for this evening. It was a presentation last week.
So the time to speak on this would be during courtesy of the floor?
Well, I don't, could you explain that? I don't understand. Because this was the presentation and it's embedded in all, because I went through the agenda and all the community, the committee members, and this was discussed at the committee members?
Sorry to interrupt. It's the action items, items that are being voted on at the meeting tonight.
So what items are being voted on? Because I'm looking right at the agenda right now.
Items, after item seven, we're on public comment now. Anything being voted on would be your minutes, item eight, fiscal items, nine, and so on until the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that for me?
Sure. It's, the voting items on the agenda tonight, the action items, are the things that the board will be voting on, which are the minutes, which is item eight, fiscal items, and then personnel items, curriculum and programs, policy, and then the other items. So this is, if you have a comment on anything being voted on, that would be for now. And then just any comments on any other matters, including presentations, would be during the courtesy of the floor at the end.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I'll come back when you're doing the voting then. I'll have something else later.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment on board action items?
Good evening. Douglas White, Lower Providence. You are voting on the extension for the school bus with First Student tonight, is that correct? Okay. Thanks, thanks for the opportunity to speak to the Methacton School Board. My name again is Douglas White. I'm a longtime resident of both Chester and Montgomery Counties. I've served on both the EAC and Historical Commission and School Township. I'm presently in the Lower Providence EAC Chair of the Sustainable Clean Energy Commission. I'd strongly encourage the board to renew and extend the contract with First Student to provide safe transport of Methacton students for additional five years. I applaud the school board for choosing to lease rather than to own and maintain our school buses. I believe schools should be in the business of teaching rather than running a bus company. We all trust that the buses are mechanically safe and sound as they require annual inspections. But ensuring the safety, the air quality inside the bus is another matter. I didn't know this, but there are no emissions requirements for diesel-powered school buses. I'll say that again. There are no emissions requirements for any diesel-powered school bus. So a new legislation which we mandated in 2027 is for, that's for new buses only. So I'll make available to you and anyone who wants it, an eye-opening Diesel Exhaust School Buses and Children's Health. I have 10 copies. I'd be happy to give, to pass them out tonight. The report includes sometimes exhaustive studies of diesel-related pollution over the last 23 years. Singularly, one report might not seem terribly impactful, but cumulatively, subjecting students and drivers to dangerous pollution too many times with sometimes fatal results is quite alarming and needs to be addressed. Some of the studies show direct relationships between diesel pollution and things like asthma, athletic and academic performance, elevated risk of lung cancer, and on and on and on. Math scores and actually lowered English and math scores for those who don't ride in diesel-powered buses. There's an advocacy group called Mothers and Others for Clean Air and they consider riding in a diesel-powered school bus as harmful as smoking cigarettes for children. It's kind of amazing. Now, you may know, you may or may not know, the First Student prides itself as being at the forefront of transitioning their fleets to reliable and safe electric-powered buses on their website. It's happening across the world and the U.S. has taken the lead by providing $5 billion for cleaner buses and the infrastructure to support that. I'd encourage the board to not just contract with First Student for the buses, but to make replacing the oldest and most dangerous buses a priority to protect our children.
Thank you for your comments.
Pardon me?
Thank you for your comments.
Time's up.
Did you want to leave those copies?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm back. I did, that was my second part of my speech. So voting on First Student, so that was part of my speech. So I'm back.
Okay.
Okay, so I have to start over again? Won't be that long. Okay, so.
So please state your name again then.
Yeah, I was. Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. So to summarize, the board has opted to go with a more expensive provider, leading to an increase of $75,000 a year despite a year-over-year decrease in enrollment and increase in student drivers and an increase in parent drop-offs. I was wondering where we stand on the August 2021 audit that identified non-compliance and significant internal deficiencies, school safety, bus driver requirements, transportation operations, where we're using the same provider, First Student. Where are the service level agreements and how is the contract going to be monitored? How will you control and manage additional costs if they add the electric vans? The presentation states that the electric buses prices are not included, nor do I see how the board is addressing concerns raised by taxpayers who send their children to private schools. I don't understand why equitable accommodations are not being made for those students and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Julia Nakle. I live in Lower Providence. I've emailed this to the board previously. I'm repeating this here for emphasis. You're considering renewing your contract with First Student for five years. I applaud you for potentially having electric vans in the future, but was disappointed that the possibility of electric school buses was dismissed. Is there a way that you can structure the contract to leave open the possibility of electric school buses? My understanding is that this extension would put us to 2029. A lot is going to change between now and then and leaving the option to have electric school buses would help prepare Methacton for the future. The high cost of electric school buses was given as the reason to rule them out, but that does not take into account that there are lots of grants and subsidies out there to electrify school buses. In addition, the maintenance costs of electric school buses are much less than diesel and electric vehicles are much more efficient than diesel. Therefore, the lifetime cost of an electric school bus compared to a diesel bus is a much different story than just looking at the initial cost alone and is something that should be researched. Another more compelling reason to move to electric school buses is that it is much better for the health of our students, who are particularly vulnerable because they take more breaths, their hearts beat faster, and their organ systems are still growing. The diesel pollution inside the school bus is much higher than outside the bus, meaning our children are being exposed at a higher rate than many people realize. Diesel pollution causes many issues, including coughing, nausea, headaches, asthma, cancer, damages, it damages the lungs and the heart. It decreases academic performance and decreases athletic performance. These are just some, some of the problems caused by diesel fumes that switching to electric school buses would help solve. Additionally, bus drivers love driving electric school buses. They are much quieter, allowing them to better monitor behavior on their school bus. We know there is a bus driver shortage and improving their job quality would help retain and attract drivers. One more consideration is that electric school buses are much better for the planet. Using diesel fuel contributes to climate change, which we have already seen the effects of with Hurricane Ida as well as this eerily warm winter. These children will be living in a future where climate change is more and more of a problem. Many children are already anxious about what their future will look like due to climate change. Moving to electric school buses will send a signal to these children to let them know their school district is taking action to help combat climate change. For these reasons, I would like to ask you to consider ensuring that electric school buses are an available option in your renewed contract with First Student. Looking at their website, I do see that they have an electric school bus program. Please consider exploring this option. Thank you for taking this into consideration.
Thank you.
Don't think I need that. Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. First regarding the Planetarium, there was discussion at last week's work session about the funding for the Planetarium project. I think it's important to acknowledge that even though the district is only funding $200,000 out of the $1.1 million cost, that substantially all the other sources of funding is coming from taxpayers, whether that's state taxpayers or federal income taxpayers. So you need to be good stewards of all taxpayer dollars regardless of the source. At last week's meeting, the board president referenced the Rittenhouse Astronomy Club or something like that. Could you provide information on that? And are they all local Methacton residents or are they coming from the outside? And if they're from the outside, are they being charged any sort of fees to use the Planetarium? And again, I would ask, what are the educational benefits of laser light shows held at the Planetarium regardless of the attendance figures? Regarding the transportation contract extension, I encourage the board to vote against this renewal. That may be the right decision, but it's not the right decision now. The contract is being extended a year early. First Student requested the extension. Did anybody ask why? What do they know that you don't? First Student has not always been a good partner to the district. If you recall at the beginning of the school lockdown due to COVID, the district was required to make a payment of several hundred thousand dollars, which the only explanation was so we can try to retain our drivers. My view at the time, that was similar to an extortion payment. So I'd really think about First Student and the value they are bringing as a partner. No bids have been obtained on this contract extension. Approving this contract is essentially you'd be approving a no-bid contract with a value of $40 million over its life. There's been a lot of comparison of rates paid in this contract to other districts. Let's just want only one contract aspect. There's not been a full and complete comparison of contracts between districts. Something that needs to be done to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. This proposed extension includes significant increases. 8% in years one and two, each of years one and two. 4 and 1/4% in each of the next four years. Again, bids should probably be obtained so you can evaluate the reasonableness of those increases. There's been a lot of discussion recently about parking on campus. We're going to pay more for a crossing guard. The church is helping out. Is this the opportunity to get the buses off the campus, off the high school campus, to allow for more parking? Is this the opportunity to reclaim the transportation building, which we saw requires millions of dollars of investment to maintain? So you've got a lot of opportunities to save costs, cut capital costs, increase parking at the high school, take the next year that's left on the current contract, get bids, and take the time to make sure you get the proper contract in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else for public comment on board action items? Seeing, seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the January 17th, 2023 work session and proposed preliminary budget and January 24th, 2023 regular board meeting minutes as attached? Mr. Ruckstuhl, may I have a second? Ms. Graff? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? 6-0. Thank you. And now to fiscal items. Mr. Booker, thank you.
Hi, Madam President. This month for your approval are seven fiscal items with no changes from the work session.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all fiscal items? Or does anyone want to take anything separately? Okay, Ms. Reese with the motion. Do I have a second on fiscal? Mr. Ruckstuhl, thank you. Any comments from the board? Ms. Reese?
I did miss one property meeting in the last few months, but I know we have talked about this quite a bit at property, the, excuse me, I'm not being clear, on the transportation contract extension. Could you give a very, from when many of us were not on the board? In fact, I don't think any of us were on the board when First Student was first hired, before Paul and I's time, right, Paul? Okay, just double checking. But could you just briefly, the part that I'm the most interested in and that I will help the public is not only how much transportation has changed-
is not only how much transportation has changed in the last nine years, but how much transportation has changed in the last three and a half years? Just, there's nobody, there's, in short, and I don't want to take words, the wrong words, no one's knocking at anybody's door to take transportation. There, it's, there's a lack of bus drivers, there's a lack of everything. So, could you, if you don't mind, or maybe I'm not asking the question properly. In short, we are doing the most fiscally responsible thing as far as transportation is concerned, and I'll get to the electric in a minute.
Yeah, I think we can address a number of these items that were brought before the microphone here this evening. Specifically, Mr. Booker took the necessary steps to have the conversations with First Student about the use of electric vehicles, and certainly he can elaborate on that to a greater extent. But the most important part that this board wants to understand is we've already included electric vans, which are available and are affordable as part of an agreement to move forward in the next five years. But more importantly, our contract allows us the flexibility in order to renegotiate if, in fact, electric buses become more affordable and are the right path for us, or if we fall into a federal grant dollars and so on. So, the opportunity is there. This doesn't lock us into only having diesel buses in the future. And the beauty of that is that Mr. Booker has an eye to that particular matter, who also drives an electric vehicle himself. So, if you want to understand the value and the interest in that area, he can speak to all of those benefits. On a second note, though, the entire agreement, it was done in a way that allowed us to evaluate all the existing contracts and preempt a requirement for us to go out to bid. Because there's only one year left on our agreement, it would be irresponsible for us to bid in the last year of the agreement, knowing the major challenge that could unfold if, in fact, we decided to go with a different vendor. And because this is a service, it doesn't necessarily require us to bid, but it does make good sense to make the right business decisions. And Mr. Booker, as always, has brought forward the comparative rates, has brought forward the recent awarded bids, and has shared with you in a previous meeting that if we go out to bid, we have an opportunity to actually be required to pay more. Because then, not only would First Student be bidding against themselves, they, you know, there would likely be a higher cost coming to us as indicative of the current contracts that have been rewarded recently. So, with all that said, I can tell you with confidence that this agreement has been reviewed, and it has the flexibility necessary to make advancements when the time is appropriate with electric vehicles or any other types of vehicles. As you recall, we also added in a box truck and a number of incentives to help with the driver shortage, and that's all through the leadership of Mr. Booker and his negotiation with First Student. So, I must commend him for that, and I recommend that the board vote for that matter unanimously. Yes?
So, my question is, I mean, I hear the comments about the electric buses. I'm with you, right? Like, I think it's a great idea. Did we do, ask the question of whether or not First Student has the ability to actually supply and provide a fleet of electric buses today? Because it's my understanding that many of the bus companies will provide some electric vehicles, and they do tout that. It's not very common that they can provide them in the whole fleet kind of approach that we would want if we had our best choices, right?
They could not, just to be able to order them, the time to get them. You're looking, from my understanding and talking with them, and I have talked to their electric group, for lack of a better term, for their electric division. And it's about somewhere between a year to 18 months to get them. They'd have to order them. We're probably looking at a price right now, we're talking about the first year being $326.70, and we're probably talking about $600 for an electric bus, roughly.
So, essentially, they would be taking the cost of purchasing the buses and rolling it into our contract.
Of course.
And almost doubling our costs.
That's why the "to be determined" is built into the contract for the electric buses, because we are looking for that grants could come available. We could phase them in. Right now, we're looking to phase in the vans, because we have no experience with electric vehicles. I think we start with the vans, understand how it works, understands the needs, understand the operations, and then look to expand it down the road. It's definitely something we want to head to and direct ourselves towards, but we got to do it in phases.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, there's infrastructure that's required to support those.
Yes, and so that was my follow-up question was, the infrastructure would have to be built in order for us to be able to have electric buses here to be operating for us. So, that would all be another construction effort on our part to accommodate the buses. Once we know they're ordered and coming to us at a certain point, we would then have to be prepared to allow them to have charging stations.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, and it's a timing matter. As you, have you seen through some of the conversations and presentation on the high school facilities assessment, we hear the concerns about parking on the campus. A gentleman from the audience mentioned that we should move the transportation facilities off of this campus. Imagine making an investment in that infrastructure and then having to move all that to some other point. We're at a, I'll call it a functional challenge in terms of, you know, what is the right maneuver for the future? And, you know, over the next, you know, 10, 12 months, we'll be having those conversations, and hopefully, you know, we can set the path forward and make those decisions. And hopefully, you know, if the time presents itself, you know, start having those conversations and renegotiate for electric vehicles, electric buses, when it's appropriate.
Thank you.
I do, I did just have a question, just because this was discussed. I finance, and I know I asked the question about the contract and also the availability of the electric buses, and I appreciate the information that's been shared. I think we have to thank the administration. It's also have things in the work now in reference to sustainability and also looking at other facets in that component, right? When we're thinking about, and I think the electric buses are great, but we also know that there's things that we're not, are not in place for us to be able to move to that direction by the end of this contract, right? So, where the contract is up, and are we in a position to make that? But I think one of the things to highlight is that, based on where we are right now, we know that this contract, based on the way it is, can be amended when the time comes. And I think that's the point that we want to clarify, is that the contract, the way it's currently written, if we are in a position to implement a change to it as far as moving to electric buses, based on whatever happened, having the infrastructures are ready, the buses are available, because I know there's shortage issues also, are we in a position to amend this contract?
We are, and that's the exact point, and thank you for reiterating that. So, we have the flexibility, but we need to make sure that we preserve the best financial and operational aspect of our relationship going forward so that we continue providing services at the least cost and the best service.
Anybody else?
I just want to really quickly, I just wasn't, I just wanted to reiterate, ever since we added transportation to property, and Mr. Booker has been incredible at working on inefficiencies and doing his due diligence and working really hard. And I believe that it was after Mr. Earnshaw's time on the board that Mr. Booker took over that role. And I could be a little fuzzy on the timing, but I just wanted to reiterate, as a member of the Property and Transportation Committee, I listened to all the due diligence that Mr. Booker has done. And I don't want to keep, you know, it is a different world today than it was eight years ago in many different aspects, in many people's different work lives. And education and transportation are two of those. There is no pounding on the door of transportation companies wanting to transport thousands of children.
Ms. Reese, thank you for recognizing Mr. Booker for the exceptional job that he's done. We appreciate that.
I actually had a question about, it was mentioned, the August 2020 audit on our services or the bus. If you have a recollection of that, could you please remind us of what those findings were of the deficiencies and how they were addressed?
So, one of them was the fact that we did not maintain the driver's record in HR. We actually maintained them in the transportation building. So, we made copies and brought them up while the auditors were here. There was also a question as to how to store our data, data points, because the system we use is dynamic, it's not static, and did not keep that. So, we made the changes to keep the data static and save it. And the other one, as you'll notice on 13, is to, as drivers are hired, to make sure we add them to the agenda so they're approved each time.
And all of those matters have been resolved and processes and procedures are in place.
And approved by the auditors from their responses to their audit.
Okay, so, basically, it was a clerical issue with a driver's log, a board agenda issue with approving drivers, and moving of data points from dynamic to static.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on fiscal, anything under fiscal? Okay, I just had a question about the planetarium seating and if that was just part of the subcontracting that was done, or if that was a bid requirement? And?
So, the planetarium seating cost includes the purchase of the chairs, the delivery and freight of the chairs, as well as the installation of the chairs.
Okay, so it's basically everything that gets the chairs into the building, not just the physical chairs themselves?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Then with that, if I can, all in favor of all the items as presented under fiscal? Any, everyone in favor? Anyone opposed under fiscal? In favor of fiscal? Okay, anyone opposed? All right, that was a six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have personnel. Dr. Surjani?
Good evening, and thank you, Madam President, for your consideration this month. We have the personnel items as presented last week at the work session with the following additions. One resignation professional, Rebecca Gallagher, math instructor at the high school. This is for retirement. We thank Mrs. Gallagher for her 25 years of service to Methacton, and we wish her very well in her retirement. We have one uncompensated leave of absence. Rob Howard, school counselor at the high school, is noted. The addition of two supplemental contracts for instruction in the home, and one for homebound, excuse me, instruction, and two additions to the list of coaches. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented? Ms. Reese, and may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any questions or comments under personnel? Ms. Reese?
Yeah, you mentioned last week you were going to have a new retirement. Bummer to see a longstanding math teacher on here and in addition to all the other things she does at the school. There's a newer, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't find words today. A newer dead, there's a deadline, not a deadline, but there's a newer incentive to retire by a certain time. I assume this is in that time, not in that time, I don't want to get nosy, but.
It's within that time.
It is, okay.
The end is actually tomorrow.
Okay, and that's, so this, not, I'm not saying this is it. I just, because we don't want to see any of our wonderful teachers retire. But so, that was my question. So, this is not the last of it, but hopefully, the most of it.
That's the hope. As we discussed last year at this time, the intent of the incentive in large measure was to allow us plenty of time to know who might be retiring and to begin the process of replacing those positions.
Okay, and not to get to the nitty-gritty, because that is not our job here. I would certainly approve this leave for Mr. Howard. That does seem to be in the crux of course selection for freshmen, so I'm assuming he is just timing that out a little differently.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments under personnel? Okay, all in favor of all items as presented? Any opposed? Six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, curriculum and programs. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, I'm seeking approval for the revised curriculum documents as listed below for the 2324 school year. Items 11B and 11C will appear on the March 28 action meeting agenda for your approval at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items under curriculum and programs as presented, Ms. Graff?
The motion should be approve all items under curriculum 11A as presented.
Oh, that is not what this says. 11A?
11A.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's okay. May I have a motion to approve all items listed under 11A as presented? Ms. Graff? And a second, Mr. Winters? Any questions or comments on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, policy. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Madam President. There are no additions to the policies that we reviewed for second read last week. Again, most of the major changes had to do with threat assessment updates and some legal changes due to recent court cases. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the policies for second read as presented? Ms. Perdue? And a second, Mr. Ruckstuhl? Any questions or comments under policies? All in favor? Any opposed? Six-zero. Thank you. And other. Dr. Zerbi?
On the agenda under other, the only additions to, from last week would have been the agreements listed in the 13D, and that's the approve the settlement agreement and release for student 250953 with special language of the terms of the settlement agreement approved by the district solicitor. And two, approve the settlement agreement and release for student 271594 with special language of terms of settlement agreement approved by the district solicitor.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items listed under other? Mr. Winters, and may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any questions or comments of the items listed under other? All in favor? Any opposed? Six-zero. Thank you. All right, now, it's dates for board members' calendars. Please note that the March 9 Policy Committee is canceled for March. And now, we have old and new business. Do we have any old or new business from the board? Okay, now, it's time for courtesy of the floor. This is a time for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and you can submit questions to information@methacton.org. Anyone for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Ms. Reese, Mr. Booker did oversee transportation when I was on the board, and I agree he did a tremendous job. And also, I'll note that we went out for a bit a lot more things when I was on the board as well, so just to note that. At last week's meeting, I brought up the stated auditor general's work in the area of some neighboring school districts and looking at their tax increases and what they've been doing with fund balance. I referenced an article, and I'll just quote one sentence from the article of what the auditor general said. "Some startling trends began to appear to our auditors, like moving money around to make sure a district would always meet the threshold to raise taxes." If Dr. Zerbi, if you could explain how. If Dr. Zerbi, if you could explain how, what the practice of taking surpluses and moving to them to capital reserves is any different, I'd like to hear that. And also, could you explain what happens if a district's general fund balance exceeds 8%? If memory serves, there's limitations on tax increases in that situation. The district posted a $3.6 million budget surplus for the 2122 fiscal year. I found an old forecast that was done in April of 2022, it projected a $1.2 million surplus. So in two months, that surplus went from 1-2 to 3-6. So I'll ask you a question again. Is the district doing anything to improve its forecasting? And has the forecast been done for the current fiscal year in preparing for next year's budget? At the February 21 meeting, I asked about a prior adjustment from the auditors, and I appreciate Mr. Winters asking for an explanation. And Mr. Booker's explanation seemed to reference the change in orders and how they had a difference of opinion. Well, I turned to page 79 in the audit report, and an explanation of that prior period adjustment states, when auditing beginning balances, an error was discovered on the client's estimated reimbursement workbook. The amount stated here is the correction that was needed to reflect what the true receivable balance should have been in the prior year. That sounds like an error to me, not a difference of opinion between orders, and it sounds like there was a revenue under accrual in the financials for the year ended '21 that had to be corrected. So maybe you could helpfully clarify that for me. Page 90 of the audit report shows a schedule of the tax collector's receipts. Could you somebody explain to me why $745,000 of local taxes were returned to the county? If you could explain that at some point, that'd be appreciated as well. Mr. Winters, last meeting I asked about the PCAs that were removed from the budget, I think it was about $450,000, and the sound of the explanation was that we didn't need that personnel because we outsourced that function. Well, if you're removing the salary costs, but there's no evidence of the outsourced costs being put back in. So my question is, did the original budget double count those costs? And are there any other situations in the budget where we'll double counting? Are we double counting salaries and substitute costs, for example? You might want to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Hi, Rebecca Katagnas, Lower Providence. When discussing the building presentation, Dr. Zerbi, you turned toward the board members, and you asked, and you said to them, when the board and the administration decide on the repairs, I find that very telling that you didn't mention the community, and I think a project like that really needs to go up to, up for a referendum. Secondly, you talk about every, making everyone feel like they belong. I watched you cut one of the few people here to speak in an incredibly dismissive way. You interrupted her, and you stopped her time. You control the information, you control the agenda, you control this meeting, and you speak freely amongst yourselves, but you give residents three minutes. Three minutes. So now for what I prepared, I'll do it as quickly as I can. Recently, I read an article addressing the request for a, quote, "book ban" from some parents in the district. As a journalist and a veteran, I would literally die for our First Amendment rights, so naturally such an inflammatory allegation was an attack to my sensibilities. So I reached out to some of those parents who have been publicly tarred and feathered as book banning political ideologues, dead set on censoring literature, literature from their school library, a place which is supposed to be a curated collection of academic materials. I wanted to hear from them directly. What are their motivations? Are they banning books? Did they really want to censor ideas? They all answered unequivocally no. I asked if they are members of Moms for Liberty, and none were. Did they coordinate their efforts for political purposes? Not one. Were they trying to shelter their children? Did they oppose sex education? Do they not like gay people? Did they object based on religious beliefs? Again, their answers were no, 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 and no. Their concerns are not about publishing and politicking, but as parents, and some of their valid, some of their issues are actually incredibly valid. Sadly, three minutes does not allow me time to accurately address their points without rendering my commentary as fodder for later misuse in soundbites for those ministers of truth out there. So I, here I stand before you with one simple request of inclusivity, that we do not dismiss those with different ideas or opinions as simple political hacks. It is disingenuous to do so. Attacking others at a personal level in order to render their argument invalid is intellectually lazy. Misaligning individuals with organizations where they have absolutely no allegiance borders on defamation. Those who hold positions of power, be it elected or administrative, have a moral imperative to whom much is given, much is expected. Each person here at the lectern is but one voice, their voice speaking on behalf of themselves, but you, you have a duty to be the voice for all of us. You sit there at the proverbial table, but it is not a throne. I implore board members to truly ask yourselves, whose words do you hear when you speak? Are they your words, or are they our words? Our words? Believe me, from where I sit, the emperor wears no clothes. This is not an existential fight against the Third Reich. It is a discussion about some books. Attacking each other does not equate to the heroism of fighting Nazis. It diminishes it. This is not Germany, but rather our community. We are not enemies, we are neighbors.
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor tonight?
Jim Malik Warcestra, that was superb. I'm going to help Mr. Earnshaw out, because I got a copy of the article he was referring to. And it says here, the auditor said, "The audited district moved unspent money out of their general funds into reserves to be eligible for exemptions." Not unlike you taking $7 million of Shannon Del Escro and putting it in the capital fund. So to sit here and say there's no shell game, this and that, I disagree. What I handed you is something from the Cochrane Review, which is the most extensive study on masking in the country. And I asked you guys before, you know, did you, are you going to evaluate your COVID response and how you performed? And nothing, zero. I mean, we're spending money, we're building planetarium, we're knocking down Audubon, but nothing about what you did to the kids. Masks, social distancing, and all the rest of it. So I'm going to help you to start your little study. With regards to medical and surgical masks, wearing masks in the community probably makes little or no difference to the outcomes of influenza and COVID. N95 masks, same thing. Hand hygiene, same exact thing. Everything you did for COVID was wrong. So never again should that happen to these kids. Your actions resulted in them having their test scores drop 30% over three years. I suggest you do what I said. Go back and evaluate your performance. Now for the, I'm going to talk about the Methacton Construction Corporation again. Ms. Graff, I have to disagree with you on the presentation from the Veritas people. It's probably one of the worst presentations I think I've ever heard, because they didn't say anything to us. I mean, you must have a different report than he showed up there, maybe that's why you think it's good. But basically, I looked at that, and he's like, trust me, we go from everything being fine to all of a sudden we have an emergency here, time for a new school. You're going to build, I know for a fact, you've already decided, Dave, you're going to build a new school. I'll bet you $1,000 that that's what you're going to do, because I've seen your playbook. This is right out of the playbook. Get your people, get your consultants to tell you what you want. Take your little vote, and then go down the road to spend $120 million on a school we don't need. Just like Arrowhead, just like Skyview. It's a shame, but this time is going to be different, Dave. This is not going to, this is not going to stand this time. There's going to be some people involved in what you're doing.
Sheila Smith, Lower Providence. The CARE Board has raised taxes every year for the past eight years, with the potential of a 4.1 increase in 2023, despite having a surplus. This year, you have gotten around this by transferring the Shenondale Tax Appeal Settlement as $7.1 million and an additional $4.1 million of unassigned funds to capital projects, so they will be categorized as an expense. The approved cost currently $3.9 million in projects, with available funds of $12.9 million remaining after all projects are paid out. Now you're laying the groundwork for us to take on an additional $120 million. Best practices would require a second or third opinion. Meanwhile, you have never completed an after-action review on how you handle the building of Skyview, Arrowhead, and community members are struggling to pay, to pay for their food and pay their rent and mortgage. How are you prioritizing and measuring the impact around academic performance and school ranking? Our schools and performance continue to plummet year over year. Our ranking had went from 11 to 62 under CARE. Test scores went down 26% in 2019. Instead of striving for academic excellence, the district has lowered standards. Our enrollment continues to decline year over year under CARE. Students are leaving Methacton to go to private and charter schools. This year, we had 97 students choose charter over Methacton, 18 more than expecting 124 over budget. What about the 1.7 million over budget for professional education services? What exactly are those services? There are numerous 504 IEP violations. Parents are forced to secure lawyers and file complaints. Bullying is at an all-time high, and Methacton students with behavioral issues, bullies and stalkers have more rights than the victims. When are you relentlessly going to prioritize and make tough choices? We are facing inflation pressures and a potential recession. Your spending is out of control. You are almost 800,000 over budgeted Arrowhead. You're $1.00 million for the Planetarium project. Closing Arrow, Audubon is going to cost us $2.2 million after demolition, one bad decision after the other. Last June, Lower Marion School District agreed to return $27 million to settle a lawsuit over property tax increases. Is this going to be Methacton School District's future? Thank you.
I don't know if I'm a big boy. There we go. Greetings. My name is Dave Cooksley, Lower Providence Township. I'm a 14-year resident that downsized my home to move to the school district. My youngest graduated last year and is a freshman at Penn State, pursuing a biochem degree. My eldest is an OR nurse at the new Penn Medicine Organ Transplant Facility in Philadelphia. Needless to say, my wife and I have been very happy with the school system here. Both my children were members of the Gay-Straight Alliance Student Group here at Methacton High School, and I feel compelled to speak, as I only became aware two weeks ago, that there's a rot afoot in this district. There appears to be recurring organized regressive movements in this country that are currently focused on book banning. On a national stage, the anti-science, the anti-vax, the anti-mask contingent is now advocating against books. I thought book banning was a backward Florida, Florida and Texas thing, but Pennsylvania is tied for third place with Tennessee in banning the most school books. Organized groups mentioned tonight, like Moms for Liberty, are currently circulating target lists of books by voices of color and LGBTQ plus authors. In more tolerant school districts, these groups are successfully targeting classics like Catcher in the Rye, To Kill a Mockingbird, and other classics that were required reading, at least when I was in school. Many of the books currently under review for banning here at the district were cited in the public comments as containing pornography or smut at the January 17 board meeting. Four of the eight books under consideration for banning by the district are on the Reader's Digest Top 10 Banned Book List. And also appear on the Moms for Liberty Top 20 Hit List. Reality check here, people. How many students would take the time to go to the library and pore over a book for potentialist salacious material when the most-used gateway to access porn and smut is in their pocket? If you're worried about your child accessing alternative voices at the library, first have a frank discussion with them about their browser history. And to the board members, please continue to support these alternative voices in the library and the students who want to access them.
Just a minute.
In closing.
Please continue.
Let's see, where was I? And to the board members, please continue to support those alternative voices in the library and the students who want to access them. You know, the more I read the news these days, the more I'm reminded of the terrific quote attributed to Huey Long, à la Sinclair Lewis, that says, "When fascism comes to America, it'll be wrapped in the flag and carried across." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening, Katie Thiel, Lower Providence. I just want to be quick. I was at the board meeting that was referred to, that an article was written about, and I feel the need to say that what I witnessed was a school board that listened to parent concerns from both sides of that argument, and I saw no form of disrespect from the school board towards the audience that night. In response to concerns about those books, I want to thank the board for allowing the current policy in the district, which calls on educator professional knowledge to review the books and respond to the parent concerns. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for courtesy of the floor tonight? Okay, seeing none. Any other comments from board members or wrap-up comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just touch on a few things if I could. So there were, there were comments made about the auditor general's report, and a couple other comments made about shell games and moving money around and all that kind of stuff. And I explained last week, when those same and similar comments were made, that, you know, the, the district has the requirement to provide a third-party auditor on an annual basis to come in and audit the books for the district. Okay, so I'm not going to repeat exactly what I said last week, you can look at the video and go through that on your own, but I think that's a key element for the board and the public to understand. The second item is, there are multiple funds that are made by, by school code available for school districts. One of them is, one of them is the general fund. Another is the capital fund. And just imagine, how would we ever get money to the capital fund without moving money from the general fund? We don't, we actually don't have a program other than the ability to move the money from a general fund to a capital fund. That is by nature the way that you would get a capital fund in order to maintain your buildings and maintain the structure of your organization. Otherwise, you would think that then you would raise taxes within your general fund to take care of the roofs, to take care of construction, and therefore your, your, your tax increases would go, would spike up, go down, spike up every time you need to do a project. It's illogical. So there's a reason why the legislature provides those necessary funds, so that you can put money aside. And then there's also reasons why there's percentages of your annual budget that are supposed to be held in reserve, so that in an emergency, the school district has the opportunity to address it without having to do emergency borrowing, which might put them at risk of spending, you know, exorbitant amount of money depending on the market at that given time. In terms of the comment with respects to the audit and, and an error, it should be known that there were no findings in the audit. If there was anything that was of concern by the auditors, or even our previous auditors, we would be cited for that. So while Mr. Booker shared with you that it is a difference of opinion, you must understand that our prior auditors were fine. that our prior auditors were fine with the mechanisms and the mechanics associated with what we were doing with respects to the, the previous year's number, the $580,000. The new auditors, as Mr. Bricker indicated, suggested that they prefer a different procedure. And therefore, as we would with any auditor, we would comply with their request. And as such, that's what we did, and that's why you see that in the audit report. I must also just jump into rankings real quick because it's really difficult to sit on a regular basis and have people make claims with irresponsible facts. What I mean by that is, the Methacton School District, and I've done this on a number of occasions, I've, I've made presentations before the board, so this isn't the first time you're hearing this, but we can't continue to say that Methacton was once 11 and now is 62. The truth of the matter is, in the, in the 17-year history of the rankings that I can get my access to, Methacton was ranked 11th once. They were also ranked 175 once. And we generally are in the 60s to 65 ranking. Would I like it to be different? I absolutely would, and that's why in the strategic plan, we have two goals, to improve the favorable feedback of our constituents and to improve our ranking. And that's what we've been doing. So we've been moving from high 60s into the 50s just in the last two years, thanks to a leadership of Dr. Walsh in the curriculum department, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Angstad in the Special Education Department, thanks to the work of our Assistant Superintendent, and all of our staff, our parent supporters, and so on. So I really must share with the board that while we were once 11, and I wish we were always 11, and we have work to do, and we always can get better. And our strategic plan has more than 100-plus strategies associated with making those improvements, and you heard one of them tonight, yes. Food services and the quality of the food is a part of the experience, and that's our target here. So with all that said, I just want to make sure that you're clear and folks at home are clear that, yes, we want to be number 11, and we need to work towards that, but we were 11th once, and we want to be 11th one more time again, if not consistently going forward. So with that, we need your help, we need your help, we work together, we get it done.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Perdue.
I do want to say thank you, Dr. Zarbi. I think we heard a lot of great presentations today. I do feel very grateful the work that the MCCSCA and also our home and school are doing. I know all those groups, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of planning. When I was first in Methacton joining Warsestra, I know coming into their first meeting, it could be as early as August or September, they already have plans laid out as far as the things that they plan to do for our district and also our students. And a lot of that go into what we want to see here, providing exceptional education experience for all our students, every one of those facets matter. The check presented by the Education Foundation, we appreciate it. And I think we are on our way to making a lot of improvements with our district, as mentioned by Dr. Zarbi. And I do commend the administration and the staff, teachers, parents, all of us for our support, and even everyone that show up at the board meeting to provide feedback. Each of it is very helpful. It helps whether it's you're bringing discussions to our attention, but when we do look at it, there are policies in place by the school board and in the school district also to make sure that every single comment that is brought to the board is reviewed and also handled in a proper procedure based on following our board policies. So I do appreciate all the work that we are doing and continue to do for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other wrap-up comments? Mr. Winters.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions that I think we should follow up on related to the finances. There was, I believe, if you don't know this, Dr. Zarbi, it's completely fine, but there was a reference to an audit issue with $750,000, $745,000 being returned to the county. Does that have something to do with, I believe, students that are getting education at the facility? And if not, we'll come back.
Let us review that.
Serve back on that. That's my understanding, is because we have the correctional institution, I believe, is the reason for that. There was also some continued questions related to the double counting in the PCAs.
Well, there's no double counting, Mr. Winters. We're actually a million plus short in the special education budget because we had to, you know, pay for those additional BCBA's in order to meet the requirements and the needs of the students. And therefore, while on one hand, we had the budgeted staff, those staff don't typically come from the district, and therefore, they had to be pulled out of the special education budget. So they weren't budgeted for, but they were expended out of that budget.
Yeah, thank you. And also, there was some, certainly agree with the promise, the premise that we need to continue to try to get closer on our forecast before year end, no doubt. But there's many variables in that, including state funding coming back at certain points in time, additional issues, so it's not an exact science. But of course, Mr. Bricker and everybody is trying to get as close as possible throughout the year. I do want to make one other comment, that in the budget, we did put $700,000 for a transfer of the capital reserve this year. And that is to be for, primarily for ongoing capital needs, right, that we know that we're going to have. So it's interesting that that was argued to be taken out of the budget as something that we could save on, on the tax increase. But the purpose is to fund it on an ongoing basis and not have to pay interest on that. So it's a little bit ironic that the argument that the, the capital reserve is overfunded when we weren't, when we were trying to fund it and then to begin with on an ongoing basis. So the other aspect, you know, there has been no decision related to a high school for sure, what to do with the high school. I think what was presented well today is that there is a lot of expense that needs to be done to improve this facility over the next five, seven years, certainly the 10. And it does seem to accelerate in year three, four, and five because the HVAC system is the one that's crashing at that point, more or less. Maybe crashing isn't the right word, but it's reaching end of life. So I think there's a decision point that has to be made about where you spend that money. It's not like that the HVAC can run another 10 or 20 years without us investing in an improvement. And that's what the purpose of that Veritas report is, to give us guidance on some of those things.
I have to agree with you on the, on a particular matter, and I think this board did a good job with pausing several months ago when we brought before you the recommendation to go out to bid on the HVAC work at the high school. If you saw the pie chart up there, that, that expense of the high school is, is subject to about 28% of the overall cost associated with, with the $119 million value of the high school. So given that, that investment that we would have made, we would have likely been making not only that investment, but that investment blindly without the consideration of all the other aspects and things that, that were included, not only in the report that we have yet to fully review, but also inclusive of some of the things that we might not find in the report, like, you know, consideration of parking on this campus, consideration of, of, you know, traffic flow and a number of other items. So I think there's, there's a lot of homework, like you said, Mr. Winters, that we need to do as administration and the board to make sure that whatever investments we make here at the high school, we make them with a vision for what tomorrow is going to look like and what 50 years from now is going to look like.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, may, yes.
I was going to motion to adjourn in honor of Drew, Mr. McGinnis.
May I have a motion to adjourn? I see Ms. Reese, may I have a second? Mr. Winters, thank you so much for coming out. This meeting is adjourned.